Good evening and welcome to our first meeting of 2016. I pledge... I pledge to the republic of the United States of America, considering all which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'm ready for members of the community to address the form of education of the gym.
Yes.
So I'm asking the public, I demand acceptance of reservation. Did Lori resign on her own or was it a matter of conflict of interest in seeking justice?
She was notified or advised that it is a conflict of interest and resigned on her own.
Okay, thank you. Are we going to give the position to the person that came in third during the election?
Well, we could discuss that later, but first we have to approve her reservation.
Okay. Second question is I am D. Can you sum up for the public what the memorandum of agreement with the Republican Central Faculty Association dated today and accomplices?
We offered the incentive and needs to help us out with the 0% tax levy that is for this year. And in doing so, we needed at least a minimum of 15 in order to save one and a half million dollars for an extra budget. At the present time, we have at least 16. We may have more. We don't, we won't know until Friday. Now, as far as the incentive, they were asked to choose between receiving 25,000 above what's in the contract as post-retirement benefit or receiving health insurance at a subsidized rate until the retirement reaches 65. And that choice will all come down to how old the retiree is. All post-retirement benefits will be rolled into a 403B, which is very cost-saving to the district as well as the retiring employee. And also, that, yup, that's about it.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So in the incentive, it's only 25,000 dollars above?
Yes.
That's it, and then the other thing?
That's it.
And he said the health insurance thing? Because that's not what I have here. Is additional 40,000 if they choose a certain option?
Option.
Is there option one and is there option two?
This is additional. This, yeah, this is separate.
Well, it's not separate on the work that I receive. It says right here, "Under the incentive in addition to the standard contractual benefits outlawed below, members who are eligible to retire with TRS by March 30th, 2016..."
Yes, as the current contract, this is in addition to.
May choose option one of the health insurance and receive an additional 40,000 dollars. Additional 20 is above and beyond, like you said, the 25,000. Option two would receive an additional 25,000. So it's the same thing. They get 40,000 dollars if they choose option one. Correct?
This incentive is in addition to what the original contract has said.
This is the incentive that was put out, is someone sent me through the pledge, James.
Yeah, three years ago, there wasn't a incentive.
There's a three-year ago incentive. Would you like to see the paper? This is the paper that was sent out to the employees and stated December 17, 2015.
2015. Anyone else? Approval of the consent agenda, motion. Thank you, Mr. Dorr, second, Mr. Meyer, all in favor, motion carried. No business, onto new, acceptance of reservation, board member Lori Holt, motion.
Motion.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer, second, Ms. Lance. Any discussion, comment?
Just want to, I'm sure most of us have seen her by now, but I want to thank her for her time on the board a few years back and then when she just came back to join us for a few years. So I was thinking maybe we could just send out a thank you or something along the lines for all of us.
Yes, thank you. All in favor? Motion carried. Call for special district meeting, this is for the libraries, meeting hollow in Riverhead, motion. Thank you, Ms. Lien, second, Mr. Meyer, any discussion? All in favor, motion carried. Approval of memorandum of agreement, I'm sorry. Sorry, item B, go back to item B. Motion to approve budgetary increases is put E bar. Thank you, Mr. Meyer, second, thank you, Ms. Lance, any discussion? All in favor, motion carried. Okay, now, I am D. Approval memorandum of agreement, motion. Thank you, Ms. Lance, second, Mr. Meyer, any comments, questions? All in favor, motion carried. Item E, approval of agreements, motion. Thank you, Mr. Meyer, second, Ms. Lien. Any questions or comments? This is for Ida Segware and Laura Craywell, consultant. All in favor, motion carried. Item F, approval of change orders, these are through the high school, middle school, motion, Blaskis wall. And, sorry, Mr. Dorr, second, Ms. Lien, any questions? All in favor, motion carried. Item G, approval of field trips, varsity's boys track, NJRO2C, motion. Thank you, Mr. Meyer, second, Ms. Lien, any questions, comments? Yes, Mr. Dorr.
Question. On these field trips, the advisors or coaches, they're out of state, the district paying for them or is that through fundraising?
Up to the state level, the district has to cover their costs. It wouldn't go past the state level to say that some sort of national competition. Practice has been... Anything past the state level of practice has been, it would be fundraised to cover their costs, but up to the state level, the practice has been for us to cover. So these few out-of-state trips are covered by the fundraiser? No, these are not covered by the fundraiser. Any national level competitions, or if they were to go past the state championships or state, whatever the level might be in that particular sport, it would be fundraised for, but this would be covered by the district.
So like the track one going to Pennsylvania, is the district covering or is the fundraiser? Because that's out of state, so it's beyond the states.
That's my understanding, but I'll check on it and get back to you.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, motion carried. I advance approval of surplus and audly equipment, this is for the portable buildings.
Not the government.
No. Motion. Thank you, Mr. Dorr, second, Mr. Meyer, any questions? All in favor, motion carried. Approval of acceptance of donation, this is from Hofstra University, $200 for an SA scholarship contest, motion. Thank you, Mr. Dorr, second, Ms. Lien.
Thank you, as always.
Yes. All in favor, motion carried. And Ms. Corden.
Thank you. Just wanted to start off by saying happy new year to everyone. Really looking forward to a lot of things coming in 2016, 17. There's a lot going on, as you're aware, at the State Education Department. Looking forward to the governor's state of the state tomorrow, so we may get a little more direction in how we're moving forward with a number of different issues, including our annual professional performance review for our teachers and administrators, as well as the Common Core standards. And something that's very important to us as a district and that we've been advocating for on a regular basis is really looking for alternative pathways for graduation, particularly for our students with disabilities and for our in-house students. You may have read that it's something that our advocacy is really starting to pay off in that our legislators and our government officials are actually listening and we're hoping for some changes as we go into the future. Also, just want to begin by thanking the Riverhead, Flanders, Jamesport, and Eusport fire departments and the Riverhead Amulettate Ambulance Company and our town police for very swift actions in responding to the fire at the high school North Portables on Sunday. Thanks to their quick work, we had the fire contained very quickly and it was in one building and did not spread at all. And we're just very thankful for the just incredible response from our firefighters and from the police. So we really appreciate all their efforts. We're currently looking into, are the investigators and the insurance company, it seems to have been an electrical fire, looking into the causes of it and how to move forward. Just so you're aware, all of the other units in all of our other portables were checked out by our service representatives to be sure that everything is in good working order. Once we get all the information, I will bring that to the board about how we can move forward with what to do with the damaged building. So once again, thank you to all of our emergency responders. Also, at that time, as you're aware, we had our play, My My Birdie, was the last performance going on and it had to be evacuated and it had to be rescheduled. I did have the pleasure of being at the play on Friday night. Very applaud our students and our faculty for all their hard work. The performance has been rescheduled for next Sunday at 1:00 here in the high school auditorium and the performance will be for free for anybody who would like to attend. So encourage you all to come and support our students and enjoy a nice show. Also, I want to congratulate two of our high school seniors, Dylan Faber-Wiggins and Carly Hayen. They were recommended by their guidance counselors for the National School Development Council and Scope Education Service Award for Academic Growth and Student Leadership in Learn. Dylan is the varsity tennis captain and lead flute in the concert band. And Carly is a three-sport athlete and a community volunteer. I'm really very proud of all their accomplishments and the recognition for them for this award. Also, just want to mention that our district is a certified kindness challenge district, which means that last year, all of our schools participated in the Great Kindness Challenge. It's part of our effort to combat bullying and to encourage and get students to be empathetic towards each other and to really work with each other in learning how to be kind to each other. And all our elementary schools and the middle schools confirmed that they're going to be participating again and they are also going to be participating in Coins for Kenya, which is a global service project to help build a new school in a Kenyan village. And the goal is to build a fully equipped six-room school for about 200 students ages four through eight and we support them greatly in this endeavor. Part of what we, of our curriculum is really helping students learn to be advocates for making change happen within the world and helping to make the world a better place. In alumni news, we do also want to mention, you may have seen in the local papers, that we had a 2012 graduate, Amanda Gallo, who got, she, Amanda went to Rensselaer Polytech Institute with a full ROTC scholarship and she has been selected as one of six women nationwide to begin her service in the United States Navy by joining their submarine force. Women were only first permitted to serve on submarines beginning in 2010. Amanda has always made it a goal of hers to join the Navy and to be submarine officers. And we congratulate Amanda on this really significant accomplishment and achievement and we also want to thank her for her service to our nation. Also, as I said, just want to mention that we have some upcoming events. We have the second middle school concert, which is going to be tomorrow evening, the high school concert tomorrow evening, 7:00 PM here at the high school auditorium. And I just want to also mention that our Middle Masks play has been rescheduled to March. It is on the calendar to take place this month, but due to the renovation of the middle school and the cafeteria, it will be held in March and we'll let you know the exact date as we get closer. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Corden. At this time, opportunity for board members. Audience.
Yeah, I'd like to update everybody on some of the things that's been going on with the construction. A few quick things, right now, the Riverhead High School and the middle school, we're in the punchless stage of things for the most part. Trying to wrap up because our ultimate goal is to be able to close this out very shortly so that we can get our state aid. Along with that, the middle school, if you guys remember before, we had some issues in the cafeteria. Just to let everybody know, those walls that were uneven or crooked were completely taken down over the break, reshaped, brought new spatter. And that situation has been rectified. I don't know if anybody had a chance to see that, but it was pretty bad and was brought to the attention. And that's been dealt with, so next time you're in there, take a look if you can, you don't see the waves on the wall anymore. The weather's been on our side basically for the last game. I don't know if you guys get a chance to drive by all that there, they're rotten, rolling. We're very fortunate with the weather. We're getting a lot of concrete poured, a lot of block lead. I don't want to say we're ahead of schedule, we're still right on schedule, but things have been going very, very, very good at those buildings. Still on, we're on schedule for all those to be completed also. We're expecting to hear back any day now, if not already, the turf field approval from the State Education Department. As soon as that happens, we'll be sending out our bids shortly. As everybody knows, the state, pretty much their backup, I think it's like about 10 months with just approval, so we should be hearing shortly from that. And like I said, bids will follow shortly after that. And then the buildings and grounds and transportation, they're ongoing at the VPS architect level. One of the recent meetings about that is a possibility, we're going to start submitting those plans electronically, which kind of is a new thing, we can basically submit plans electronically. And even though we might not have it completely done, the architects can pull it back, make a change, put it back in, or at least where we get our spot in line. And it looks like there's a possibility, don't hold me to the fire on this, but we might, we're looking at hopefully starting our site work at the transportation building before the renovation of the building. And that solely just going to be because of how we're submitting our plans and we'll get approval back for that. So that's pretty much a quick update on what's been going on. There's been a lot, as everybody has seen, the lobbies outside and across the way at the gym. Once again, we had a great time off, you know, over the holiday break. The tiles is what's holding up something there, that's why you kind of see the cement board still up, the tiles are doing. And I think in about a month, fortunately, I think it's going to be just after the spring break, so we might not be able to use that time for, I mean, put tiles up, but hey, you never know, they might show up anyway. That's a quick wrap-up of things. If anyone has any questions, can they ask me? I'll try to do my best to answer, answer and send. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Meyer. One quick, I was also at the play, as well as Mr. Dorr, and it was a great production. And they also informed us that Shrek the Musical is coming in April, so that's another great one. Also, just so you know, I know there was a complimentary webinar for December and there's also one coming up through NISBA, and it's operating procedures to improve board performance. And it's on Wednesday, January 27th, so if you missed that email, I have copies. And that's complimentary, usually it costs non-members $190 per, so that's one of our benefits. Also, there was mention about how we're going to fill the empty seat. We want to open discussion about that now since it's the time to do so. Does anybody have any thoughts? Mr. Mueller?
I've just been trying to remember what we did a few years back when Mr. Vito stepped down. I don't remember if there was anything we followed there or that we had to follow their rules. My biggest, I just want to make sure we're doing things the correct way. I don't know if maybe reaching out to our attorneys to make sure we basically do what we're supposed to do by the letter of the law. That's really my biggest concern. I don't really know. The only thing I really remember back when Mr. Vito stepped down, she stepped down, I think we talked about it at a meeting for people that were interested, and then Mr. Schenk kind of stepped up to fill the role for a few months. Yeah, okay. So just, I just want to make sure that we do it correctly, whatever and how we're supposed to do it. Our policies are followed and...
Yes. Well, the policy just states that if we can fill the seat, we can have a special vote or wait till the upcoming election. Even if we fill the seat, the person that is filled, elected from us, has to be re-elected in man. From the people, sorry. I mean, you have to come out for nomination, you have to run. So in my eye, I think, you know, it's such a short time span because, you know, less is if we do want to fill the seat as a ward, we would have to put notice out, then interview, and then vote. And it's already the close of January and that person would have to go out for nomination in such a short time. So in my, from my perspective, I'm just thinking, let's leave the seat empty for these few months and then let the people decide how they're going to vote. That's my, I don't know if anybody has already input.
I agree with that. I think leaving it up to a vote is truly the best thing to do. It's embarrassing.
Even the seat.
Even that, the policy say it well, that is, that would be awful.
Yes, because it's such a short timeframe. If it were over a year, and also, usually, you know, over the summer, the new board member will go in for training before we actually officially start this whole year. Whereas it's the timing.
Willie came on, he's a veteran.
Yeah, Mr. Zane, he was already trained and...
And he was nominated or did he go on a side? It was a...
No.
Just not been nominated.
Nominated.
Well, I understand, no. It was, Miss Cotton had received a group of...
If I remember correctly, Miss Cotton had interviewed, for lack of better words, a group of people and I believe she came back to us and we all discussed it and had determined that Willie was the best selection because he had already gone through the training. He was quite familiar with the board. He had been a board member many years in the past. If my memory serves me correctly, I wish he hadn't was here, but I believe that's how it happened.
Yeah, it's spied, spied my mind through. I remember that and I just didn't remember how Willie ended up. Listen, I'm fine with leaving it open, but I'm not going to say yes or no to that right now if I don't know for sure, especially from Intermittent Smith, that we can do that. I just want to make sure we think you got it.
Okay. Any notes, Mr. Dorr? Okay, so...
I'm all for leaving it empty, but it's always, it's okay with...
Okay, we'll check into it.
And then our policies were followed.
Yes.
That's my biggest.
Mr. Dorr?
This past weekend, I attended our Riverhead Middle School Cheerleading Competition in Rocket Point. The cheerleaders did a great job, even though they didn't place, they all worked hard and perfect out of Riverhead very nicely. While I was there in the Rocket Point auditorium, I noticed that they have banners representing their scholar athletic teams and they're prominently placed right beside their athletic teams that were county champions and state champions. And I think we should do something like that, that our, we show that we're just as proud of our scholar athletes as we are our regular athletes, our scholar athletic teams.
Thank you. Okay. Opportunity for RCFA, I was not here to make it. Opportunity for members of the community.
So I'm asking the public, I have to... I never got a response in my email to Miss Cotton. I'm wondering if she's ready to discuss the final expenditures for the 2014, 2015 year and when the public can expect to see the numbers and what we're going to do with that surplus money.
Can you respond to that, please, Mr. Schen?
Thank you. If you look at the audit report, which is posted on our website, somewhere around page 66, I think. 66, I think, you will see line-by-line accounting of what was left over. The allocation of those funds was a decision the Board of Education reached in the last quarter beginning in June of 2015. Through a series of funding resolutions, the money was transferred into various reserves or appropriated against the fund, appropriated against the taxes for this year. So if you check on page 66, I think it's 66, it might be 65, 67, you will see the numbers you're looking for. And if you have questions about what you're reading, I'd be happy to get you discussing.
So you have no plans on presenting it to the public at a school board meeting? When I asked about, when I asked about this last year, towards the end of the school year, I was told that there was nothing final until the audit report was final. The audit report was final in November. So how could you decide in June what you were going to do with money when the audit report wasn't finalized until November?
Okay, so if you look at the, the June resolutions, they're what I call up to resolutions, where there are funding up to a certain level. So the business office, I make a projection of approximately where we will end up based on where, you know, the information we have in June, where authorizes up to a certain amount of money to be put into reserves, subject to what is actually determined to be there through the audit process. And then those numbers are followed according to the resolutions of the board, the instructions the board gives. The board is required to appropriate money into reserves before the, before June 30th in order for that to be a valid direction. So that's why if it's not a practice unique to this district, it's all districts have their boards made up to funding resolutions last quarter in June so that those instructions can be carried out following the official closing of the books.
Okay, so I'll go look at page 66 of the audit report.
And please call me if you'd like to.
I do have one question. Is any of the leftover money going to be applied towards next year's budget to try and hold the budget to zero increase? I mean, the town is going to go up 5%. They blew the cap, so nobody in this town is going to get a rebate from the state, okay? You have a bunch of senior citizens in this town that are hurting, okay? And I just want to know, are we trying to, are we trying to maintain the budget at zero percent increase?
Wait, the, our, our goal is to, our, our goal is to remain absolutely within our tax limit cap, which is one of the reasons this retirement incentive for teachers was so important to us. Between that, the retirement incentive, you may have seen something called the Gap Elimination Act. We received a restoration of that, it's looking like. We're going to get that, for us it's about $600,000, which is money that had been allocated to districts, which was taken away in prior years. There was a whole list of how much money was going to be returned to districts based on the elimination of what we call the GEA, something we've been advocating for, for a number of years as well. It looks like that's completely going to go through, so as I said, between those two pieces of information that we've received, we're very confident we'll be able to stay within the tax limit cap.
I hope so. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Well, Ms. Downs. Mr. Meyer, I want to thank you for bringing up the Honorable Lori Hulse. Because what I was expecting on the first meeting after she had won the election, I was expecting somebody on this board to at least congratulate her. She is at least an alumni of this district. And these are the kind of people we put out there and nobody publicly except Mr. Meyer tonight. And that is very, that's very disappointing. Thank you.
Ms. Liz?
Ms. Downs, I'm just kind of thinking out loud here in regards to what you had earlier asked about the memo. It's what's outlined here in our agenda, item D, the MOA, is the incentive and that's what the board has voted on. So I'm not certain what you may have, it could be part of the part of the contract. I'm, I'm not sure what you have. I'm sorry? But that wasn't voted on. This is, this is the parameters of the agreement. The board has voted on that. I can't hear you. I cannot hear you.
This is a retirement update from Lisa Golding.
But was it voted on? Was, did the Board of Education vote on that?
Did they vote on it?
That's what, that's what... You just solidized the deal.
What, what she was telling everybody is we need 15 people that wanted to get this incentive, that's what's in here. So that's what's in here.
But that wasn't voted on, Ms. Downs. What we voted on this evening is the parameter of what it is. That's the incentive. What we voted on this evening is the incentive, not what...
That's right. We don't know that because you didn't show us what we voted on. We don't know by what you're saying. However, I have here, I mean, this is, this is dated December 17, 2015 at 1:30 in the afternoon and it's retirement info. Please read if you're eligible. I mean, it, it's what I got. And it's the incentive of 2015, 2016. And if you're interested, you've got to have your stuff in by January 15 and we need 15 people. And all money's under the current contract and retirement incentive will be placed in a 403B, a map account over two tax fees if necessary, any amount over that limit with two tax fees will be paid by check. I mean, how much money do you want? Do you want to see this? Do you think I'm taking this out of the air? I mean, I am reading word for word what, what is on that.
But the board did not vote on that. We did not pass a resolution on that piece of paper that you're holding. We voted on what is in the agenda this evening that outlines...
The incentive. Yes, and the incentive is just the 20... Option one is what? 25,000? What's option two?
We're taking the health, as Mr. Shang, taking the subsidized health insurance in retirement.
So this says, option one, you receive additional $40,000. Option two, they will receive an additional $25,000. And here, it says, but option one, you may elect to continue health insurance under subsidized rate, which is half of $40,000, until you reach Medicare eligibility. The subsidized rate offers a significant savings as seen below. Below, receive a lump sum payment of $40,000 and be eligible for insurance at the standard rate. And there's a whole book, Mac, with single and family, option one, option two, standard rates of subsidized rate, NYST, RAS, prior service credit. I mean, it's 10 years of service up to 20 days, times one to 100 of, I mean, it's, it's here. It's here.
I think if I can just jump in a little bit. What confused me the most when you voted up was the $40,000 because I'd never heard that number before, so kind of as the meeting was going on, I was...
It must have been there somewhere along the line from December.
Yes. Well, obviously, I'm not, I'm not saying that you typed that up. So during the meeting, I was back and forth with our agenda and then looking at what we're approving tonight and, because like I said, I never heard the $40,000 before, so I was like, oh crap, is there $40,000?
Okay, so publicly, I'd like to ask, then I get an email, Mr. Schneider, of the Federation of...
Yeah, we're happy to send that to you. Thank you.
We don't, is it in the paper at the top there?
Isn't it, isn't it...
This?
Part of, yes. Part of what, Ms. Downs is, listening to this, some of the things she's speaking about are things that are in the current contract. So, and it's just, it's just commenting on things that are in the current contract. I don't have the piece of paper in front of me. The retirement incentive is in addition to that, what is in the current teacher's contract. And I, and some of it is just talking about how, how those different monies can be allocate, allocated to, to the retirement.
Yeah, because our, our resolution tonight doesn't break down on the health benefits of a family or, you know, family with one, family with two, so there's...
75 benefits as per current contract.
Yeah, well, it's...
Well, what are you going to tell them, Lori?
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
She has something that she got from an employee and was given out to those employees, so I suggest you take a look at what she has because the information that was given out at the meeting that got 16 people to commit to the retirement may be wrong and they may be taking the package based on incorrect information. Now, we didn't have a chance to see our CFA MOA PDF, so we don't know what you voted on. I just looked at what she has and if that's what the employees got, then they may be taking the incentive under incorrect terms. So you may, you may have a lot of problems if those people are taking the incorrect terms and saying, yes, I want it.
No, I understand. They're, they're well informed about their, yeah, they're well informed about their original contract and this is just an addition to. That's all.
Yeah, but it's the addition that's what, that what is what makes the incentive, not the original contract.
Ms. Golding signed this MOA, so she's fully aware of what's within it and it was signed on the 8th of January. So she's completely aware of what she is agreeing to and what we are presenting.
I just hope the other 16 people are aware of it.
Oh, yes. Anyone else? Anyone else? Motion to adjourn? I guess we have a second. Mr. Meyer, all in favor? Thank you. Thank you for attending tonight. We'll see you soon.